I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Vanessa, will you please call the roll?
Chair Fleming?
Yes, here.
Vice Chair Milligan?
Here.
Trezor Davis?
Here.
Secretary DeBarty?
Here.
Trustee Hatcher? Trustee Landau?
Here.
Trustee McNamara?
Here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a move? Second?
Four.
Any discussion on the agenda tonight? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Tab A, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of June 25th, monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion? Is there a move? Second? Support? Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor to approve the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to... Oh, we're going to be going into a closed session. I'd like to entertain a motion to recess the meeting and go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Do I hear a motion?
Support?
Support, okay. Any discussion on this? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Trezor Davis?
Yes.
Secretary DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McNamara?
Yes.
Okay. So we go into closed session now? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to reconvene the meeting.
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Trezor Davis?
Yes.
Secretary DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McNamara?
Yes. Thank you. I would also like to entertain a motion at this time to move Tab I up to current business, if anybody favors that?
So moved.
Second? Okay. Any discussion on Tab I? Vanessa, please call the roll. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just so people in the audience know.
We're just moving it right now.
Right now, we move it, then we...
We're moving it...
Oh, I see.
And then, right. Then we'll go. So to move the agenda item, is that a roll or is that a call? Okay. Okay, so all in favor of moving Tab I up to current business, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now, Tab I, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees ratify the proposed three-year agreement, effective August 16th, 2019, continuing through August 15th, 2022, between part-time adjunct teaching faculty affiliate with Michigan Education Association, National Education Association, and the Washtenaw Community College Board of Trustees. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Support?
Support. Any discussion on Tab I?
I just want to say, oh, I should be...
Go ahead, that's fine.
It sounded like this was overwhelmingly approved by the union, and I think it's a good agreement and nice to have it in place before the school year starts. And I think we'll have unanimous, hope to have unanimous agreement here around this table.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Trezor Davis?
Yes.
Secretary DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McNamara?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have approved the contract. Okay, moving on to citizen participation, verbal communications. First up, the WCCEA, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Good evening. I want to thank Chair Fleming for stealing my thunder. I was, I was going to urge the Board to ratify the contract you just ratified. I do want to say that though the adjunct contract is far less complex than the main contract, it has its idiosyncrasies that can be difficult to work through. And I want to commend both sides. My, the team, I was not on the negotiating team, but my team and the college's team worked to get this thing done and to get a good contract before my membership and before you. I appreciate the effort that everyone put into it. And to, to expand on what trustee DeBarty noted, yes, it was approved unanimously by the membership. Been doing this a long time, and we've never had a unanimous contract approval by the membership. So I think everyone was very pleased with the product, and I thank you for ratifying it. The only other comment that I have to make tonight is regarding the switch, the switch over to Alution. I speak both as a union president here, but as a faculty member. I had the opportunity with other members of my department a couple of weeks ago to meet with the interim CIO. And I would say we were impressed with his understanding of the institution, things that he sees need to be fixed, his willingness to listen to us. And we pointed out to him a couple of things that we thought could be made better. I'm hopeful that this will turn out well. And, and I'm here to tell you that my message to the faculty when we meet in the fall will be whatever they may have thought of this, and many of them, as you know, were not in favor of it. The decision has been made, and it's our job to make this decision work for the college. And, and that's my commitment to you and to the president, that that's what I will tell my faculty when we do have our first faculty meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time? If there are public comments, please come to the podium. Saying none. Vanessa, are there any written communications? One, okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to special reports, the master plan process. President Blanca?
Yes. As you know, we have been working on the development of our master plan. Our original meeting was with the Board, was it, the what, September, last September, I believe? And your input was taken into consideration as this plan was developed, as well as the input of, I think it's over, I'm going to steal your thunder, oh, I gotta stop talking because I'm going to say what Julie's going to say. But anyway, I, we're excited to share this with you. But no, please, this still isn't the final. We would like your input tonight, and then we'll be sharing this also with the faculty and the staff when they return, for their input. And then the final will be brought forward, okay? So Julie, before I say anymore.
Good evening. I'm here tonight with Stephen White from Elder Con Associates. You might remember him from September, when he was here and met with you and got your input. And Ricardo Pupini, who's out taking notes, scribing for, for Con tonight. And this is another opportunity, as President Blanca mentioned, to get input at this, this stage of the process. And we're getting close to the, the final product here. And it was a busy year of getting input, especially during fall semester. As President Blanca mentioned, we had input from almost 200 people over the course of the fall and into the early winter, both internally and externally. And Stephen and his team looked at all of that input, input and synthesized it, looked at it, prioritized it by kind of the emerging themes, all of which completely kind of corroborated what we heard in the sessions, because we were, you know, I was in all of those as well. And with that, kind of had a prioritized list of recommendations based on those themes, and has come up with some plans, which we've seen some previous versions of. This is a refined version that they're presenting to you tonight for, for your consideration and input. I'll hand it over to Stephen.
All right, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Well, this is another touch point. This is an opportunity for us to relay to you the process that we're developing. And then we're about step four and a half of five to get this completed. And we anticipate that by mid-fall, we'll have a draft report for you to read. And we consider the draft report is going to be a tool. So what you will see in terms of some alternatives or some, what appear to be some kind of planning diagrams, they're based on the recommendations. And, and the discussion that we share with you tonight is a representation of how you can take these recommendations that we have ranked after hearing all the information from all the various workshops, and sort of boil them down. And tonight, we're going to sort of highlight eight to 12 of the recommendations and show you how that can inform the management, the development or the planning of the campus. You have a very nice campus. We, we don't have to start over with what you have. What we're doing is we want to embellish what you have, but we want to do the right move. So we've, we've sort of given you a roadmap, so that you can take that moving forward and say, you know, when we have the opportunity, let's build this, let's move this, let's reinforce, and let's get into that discussion and, and sort of explain where we're going with that. Obviously, everything we do is founded on the trends and, and the changes that you're all experiencing from your student body, the demographics, how people are using your services, of course, your mission, you know, to provide excellent opportunities, services and programs for the community. It's getting more complicated to get the community onto your campus for a number of different reasons, whether it's transportation, people aren't driving, and certainly people are getting older and coming back for training, and certainly the timeframe at which they do that, which opens up a whole bunch of areas for you to try and figure out. What we're trying to support you with is giving you the solid environment from a physical design that can support everything moving forward. Julie had mentioned that we had identified from a lot of notes, which we will make all available to you in an appendix, but we're able to boil down the comments. The comments that kept reoccurring from a wide range of workshops that we would have, we would starting to hear the same patterns, and we would pick up on those, and we'd sort of rank those. And that's sort of how we prioritize this list of recommendations that we're moving forward. Now, instead of me trying to read this list to you and trying to comprehend it, I'm going to kind of take you through a visual representation of how these would then get applied to the campus. The Student Center. The number one recommendation is the ability to have non-academic spaces, collaboration spaces, experiential first-time-to-the-campus space. Where is the main wayfinding component of the campus? And certainly, the Student Center has a lot of roles to take on, and we've identified some of the issues and some of the benefits of making some of these new... So the Student Center was a reoccurring theme. Certainly, with the Student Center is, how do you get to the Student Center? How, what is the space in front of the Student Center? What is that experience when you come to campus for the first time? So that was really critically important, because right now, it is very car-centric. There's a lot of busing, there's a lot of, there's a lot of commotion. There's a middle college that's utilizing that for drop-offs, which creates a lot of, I'll say cross-contamination in a good way, but there's just activity. And what you're losing is the ability, the opportunity to create this campus-like environment that you're striving to have. Wayfinding? Wayfinding, not just within the building, but certainly on campus, is a, is a reoccurring theme on all of our discussions. So in order to have good wayfinding, we need intuitive spaces. So if you were to walk into a small village town or city that you've never been to, you find that town commons, that town square. You find the town square, and from there, you can find that opportunity to sort of direct yourself and find a common ground. This campus needs to develop that, that common space, real strong, a couple of really strong axes, north-south, connect the Health Center down to the Student Center, the Student Center all the way west to the Landau, all the way across that road that's currently in front of the Damon Flowers Building, to not only energize that open green space and the space on the other side of Gundermiren, but if you can take those two, and then on the fourth, create a really important, active, outdoor student, we call it a student terrace, is what we're going to call it. You then have that point that everyone can always walk back to, and it, for orientation and wayfinding, be very beneficial. We heard a number of times how difficult it was for people who don't have a car to drive to campuses, how did they get to the campus? So how does your campus touch the surrounding? How do you, how do you bring people? What are those identifiable markers that's critically important? And then the idea of a transit center as a recommendation, and taking that away from your front door, taking that conflict, that cross-contamination, let's put it perhaps in an area, and we're suggesting over by the parking structure, that puts it really close to this outdoor student terrace, to this point where the two major axes to your campus come together, to be a point to take people and bring them into the campus. And we all know that we're here in the wintertime, and that it snows, and that it rains. And then there are opportunities, you have, when you know the campus, you've got a lot of opportunities where you can navigate your way through. But certainly, to get to the Student Center, undercover walkways, getting up into the parking structure was, certainly would be an opportunity. The Middle College is, is an incredibly successful, from what we understand, program that's working within the confines of this campus. What's interesting about that particular program is high frequency of delivery of children. Children typically aren't driving, so they're getting dropped off at a high frequency in very short periods of time, which makes it very, very complicated. They also had one of the few high demands for a lot of administrative space. They seem to be working on top of each other. So there's a recommendation to, to create a secondary entry where they could be utilizing themselves for those high-frequency drop-offs. And it just happens to be a wonderful location west of VE, where we could have some building expansion, if in fact, they got to raise some funds for an administrative expansion. So the, the ability to solve multiple issues with one move is how we want to move forward with this whole planning, master plan update. And keeping in mind, it's very fluid. So this is a tool. So we hope that when you read the final report, you understand that it's the recommendations that we've been able to pull out of the student body, the teachers, the faculty yourselves, to give direction, to solve the right problems. And then the, the images that we will show you are one of several ways that you could certainly make that happen. Food choices across all demographics seem to be an issue on campus. Now, one thing we're very sensitive of, you can't build a lot of restaurants. You don't want to operate a lot of things that aren't your core mission. Your core mission isn't to feed people, although people do like to eat when they're here for long periods of time. So we're looking for creative ways to energize spaces, bringing food trucks, bring activity and life to the campus that's not all requiring you to have capital outlay for it to happen and to move forward. The open space connections, you've got some, you have a beautiful campus. There's no question, you can walk into any part of the campus and just stop for a minute, look at it, and think, wow, this is like a private garden, and it's everywhere. It's not connected. So you're not using it as well as you could. And certainly, that's something that, if we provide for it, students and faculty will certainly take advantage and be able to enjoy that. And the last one I want to touch on in terms of recommendations, the idea of not just thinking about yourselves as an organization to implement master plan improvements, but thinking about private partnerships and reaching out to perhaps a developer. You have an, we're sitting in a very interesting asset on campus at this convention, the capability to provide conventions and, and you host all summer long, but you've got limitations on its size. So reaching out, perhaps you can reach out, looking at expansion of convention, perhaps a hotel, perhaps additional restaurants. But these are things that a developer, a private entity will come in and utilize your land, and lots of interesting agreements that you can create. But looking at leveraging that opportunity to build on what you have here at Morris Lawrence, or even perhaps building on the medical campus that's across the street, and the opportunity to leverage that, that, to then give yourselves some services that, as an institution, you probably wouldn't build your own hotel. You just couldn't keep it filled. But someone who is using it for the community, maybe for the medical facility, and then you could have access to it, that's a great way for you to take advantage of these moving forward. So I'm just going to, I want to go through a couple of really, I'm taking a lot of your time, and I'm going to, yes, Rose?
May they ask questions?
Oh, absolutely.
Anytime, so, I mean, if you have a question, please, I want to encourage the Board to ask any questions as we go along.
If you went across the street to the medical campus to construct something, isn't the roadway a barrier?
Well, I'll show you where it is. It's actually on your campus, but the roadway is a barrier, and it's a barrier now. You're absolutely right. And I think the design of the, of the crossing at Huron, and let's get right to this next image, which might, in fact, let me go ahead to, to a further image, so I can address that, and I'll come back to this, because it's a, it's a, it's a good question. But if you can see on the graphic there, one of the ideas on the previous slide was to, to take this car-centric area in front of the campus and change it, and drive this, this pedestrian promenade right up to the center of it. And the idea is the redesign of Huron, rumble strips, I mean, it's not just putting a better light in a crosswalk, and I'm not suggesting that it's a bridge overpass, but the ways to deal with traffic calming by changing the materials, you know, for 60 meters, you know, making it a rumble surface, creating good crosswalks, creating very identifiable changes in material where people are crossing. I think there should be a strong connection, because your health and fitness, and we heard from a lot of your students, and we were surprised in some of the, some of the events that we had, that there were activities that were provided for the students that the students didn't know existed for them to use. Because it is, right now, it is a barrier. You're absolutely right. So through design, it needs, that barrier needs to be broken down. So if I'm going to just go backwards, because I'm going to show you where some of those opportunities were for this mixed-use development. So there's the entryway. And the idea with the entryway, again, is this, is creating this front-door experience, but changing it from a car to people. So people are walking. We, we think it's important that people take advantage of what's across Huron, because you do have a significant amount of, while it being the sports and activities, but the health and fitness center, and connecting that to the campus. The idea of the two major axes you have running from the Health Center to the Student Center, and from the Student Center west, all the way past Gundermiren, those are your two main pedestals. That's where your activity is. You still have a lot of campus on the upper level that takes you over here to Morris Lawrence, but all the time that I've spent tonight, and you've spent a lot more time on campus than I have, I never see anybody walking on the grass here between Morris Lawrence and the student terrace area that we're proposing. It's just not, there's not a need for it, though it's a great open space, people aren't really using it. But if you create a Student Center at that cross-section, intersection area there, I think that will become the place where people want to hang outside, they want to people watch. It's a building already on prominades that are there, you just need to make them better, more usable, more secondary seating, and more active spaces. You have a wonderful campus screen, we just need to revitalize it. And there's some options and some activities for it. What we're actually proposing in this particular scenario is that you remove the road in front of the Damon Flowers Building, because it's kind of a secondary road, it's, you've got another road that's behind it, and this better connects the facilities on the other side of the campus. And perhaps one day, when you do grow and you do need more academic space, that Damon Flowers Building becomes a ripe opportunity for a major building expansion to pick up for academic programming and even the facilities. But then it becomes the bookend of that quad, which is a little, when you look at good campus quads, they have solid size and containment, and it gets a little weak at that end because of the architecture is so small. But certainly, a great opportunity there. Talked about the food truck location south of the Gundermiren archway, which is kind of a walkway into the campus. Very easy for you to provide hookups for food trucks to come in and watch how that energizes the space. It's amazing, and food trucks aren't the food trucks that we're used to. It, you know, it's, it doesn't cost, it will be some infrastructure cost, but to have five or six food trucks come in and change all the time, providing these opportunities for that space, put some cafe tables and chairs out there, and you'll dramatically change the activity of that space.
Which one? I just want to make sure, which one is the Gundermiren building? I mean, the Damon Flowers building?
I don't see it.
It's the PO.
PO, okay.
Okay.
I know, I keep, I don't know if I'm incorrect in calling it the Damon Flowers Building?
No, that's what it is. It says PO, so...
Okay. It's operations and...
Oh, plant operations.
Plant operations. I think it's still PO on that. Yeah, so, my bad problem.
No, we get it.
We'll fix that, and we'll also change the color of the trees. I'm sorry, we didn't change the color of the trees, and I said we would.
We didn't change the color of the trees.
We will do that.
Those are truffula trees.
Those orange things are trees.
Orange things are trees.
They're truffula trees.
Oh, the trees.
So you're under the, you're in the middle of developing an ATC project, which is going to help reinforce the idea of this connection across, across Huron, this, this public promenade. So there's a great opportunity to bookend that on the west side with another, think of it as a white box, another reach-out development opportunity for someone else to run, you providing this space, maybe brings another restaurant on campus, maybe brings a coffee shop, maybe perhaps it can bring some other services that the campus itself couldn't support, but if it's at the front, and people can access it from the community, there might be a great opportunity to, to leverage that. Yes, sir?
Yeah, are you proposing that they, we install, or potentially at some point install, a roundabout at that entrance, at the area across from the Health and Fitness Center?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, that's not a roundabout, that's the change, that's the pattern change, that's the material change in the crosswalk. So when you're driving down the asphalt drive, and then it becomes colored concrete or rumble script. But yes, no, we were not promoting a roundabout.
Does that know if the road and commission would let us?
Yeah, we would, yeah.
You're just saying, just sort of make it, put some pavers in or something?
Very identifiable, so you know, when you're driving along and you come into a, and your car gets up on top of it, so you've already bumped up on it, you're still 30, 40 feet from the intersection, but you're already cued into the fact that, well, I'm slowing down. You know, it's kind of like a, it's a calming device that's used quite often to...
Yeah.
And, and maybe ultimately, it does get, you know, it becomes this great bridge pedestrian connection. It's not something that was asked for, and it's not something that we really think is necessary. We're very good at crossing streets as, as people, but we tend to get, we tend to lose some skill sets when we're allowed to cross some pedestrian bridges that really aren't probably necessary. Yes, sir?
On the potential commercial outlaw, I, I want rationale for why there, partly because you're proposing it where, from my experience, we have the most, one of the hardest parking lots to find space in, if not the hardest.
Yeah.
And why not further to the east, over by the Morris Lawrence Building, for example? So I'd want some rationale, if you're proposing a, a spot to put a commercial outlaw, I'd want you to give some of your thinking and expertise in why there and not somewhere else.
Sure, sure. This is not the, this is not the mixed-use development that you'll see in, if we're proposing in that location by Morris Lawrence, which is a much larger footprint. We're thinking two, maybe 4,000 square feet. It could be a simple coffee shop, it could be a simple Starbucks, but its location, where it is at the front, where people are coming in, walking in, and it's bookending what's happening on the ATC. It's, it's not to say that this has to be the location, but it's a great opportunity to help define that space. That's the rationale, of why we would look at putting something that mirrors what's happening on the other side of the entry. I think parking is a premium everywhere on the site, except for up by Morris Lawrence, because nobody wants to park there, because everyone's cool, and everybody's taking classes on the other side of the campus.
Right.
It's, it's, it's a challenge.
I don't see it going on the east side.
Going to continue if, if... Is there another question? I'll be more than happy to...
No, she just couldn't picture where you were talking.
Okay.
I see.
It's the, it's this, that red circle there, that's the one that we're talking about?
Okay, okay.
The next red circle identifies this location for a potential expansion for the Middle College, if it were to, to find some space and grow. We think it's a great opportunity for it to grow there, because we could identify and dedicate an entry up of Huron, up on that portion of the campus. And if you can sort of see there, they could have direct access to sort of their own drop-off and not have to deal with other, other traffic. This particular alternative did remove the road, though, at that point. So we're not allowing people to pass in front of the plant operations building, because we're looking at, at making a strong connection across to the campus, but the Landau building is right behind there. It's part of this campus, and it, and, and we want to try and pull that fabric of that campus all the way across. The transit drop-off identified in this location, pulling onto the other side of campus, puts it relatively close to both the pedestrian hub of this student terrace, which, keep in mind, this terrace, this student terrace we could build into the, into the slope there, is access to both levels of the Student Center. So it's an extension of the first floor of the Student Center, as well as the second floor. So it's, it's, it's very connected, outdoor space for nice weather. Nobody's going to be there in, in the middle of winter when it's raining. But when they are able to be outside, it is right at the intersection where everybody's walking north-south or, or east-west on the campus.
I have a question.
I have a question. So, is this the proposed motorway? Is it there right now, or is there something?
No, that right now, there's nothing there.
There's nothing there, so that's what it would look like? Wait, this is Clark Road, so this is the Clark Road entrance side, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So that's right by the side of the parking structure, there's actually a couple parked, there's like five.
Oh, okay, because right now, there's a walkway, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Yes. I mean, the walkway would still be there, the, the idea of putting the transit center in that location, it's got access in coming off of the Clark Road. There is a parking field there, again, every time we do something with the parking roads, we're displacing parking. So whether we have to offset that and create a parking field somewhere, but it allows the, the buses to come in and draw individuals off relatively close to the student center, which is the middle of campus, and not complicate what's happening at the main entry. That was our rationale.
Okay.
Now, that's not to say that that circle can't slide around, it's the idea, the recommendation of moving the transit and finding a home where it's not today. If, if we feel that, you know, we really, maybe we could put it over by the Morris Lawrence and have people walk all the way down across campus. It's certainly possible, but it's the recommendation that we've developed and prioritized in the hierarchy to implement. These are all incremental pieces that can be added to the campus over time. It all doesn't have to happen on day one. One of the options I talked about on the north side of Huron for this mixed-use development, maybe it's on the north side because it has a better affiliation with what's going on on the medical campus, maybe there's MLB leased out space that's occurring there. We certainly have an option that, that builds off of what's currently happening in the Morris Lawrence, so it's kind of an extension, could even be connected. Huge impact on the parking, it's right in the mobile parking field, we do recognize that, and we'd have to solve parking, you know, because you're going to have much larger parking demand if you have a larger facility, certainly if you have any kind of hoteling that could potentially even be student converted, or students who are staying there for short terms. So we have three locations that we've identified for that on the plan. So what's really important is the strong north, south, east, west pedestrian connections on campus that we want to embellish over time. You have great, you have 290 acres, if I'm not mistaken, plus or minus. You've got an easy 11,000 linear foot recreational pathway, and as well, we could provide a wonderful art walk within the internal part of the campus, and I'll show you on the next slide, it identifies it a little better. This slide we've looked at, this is the idea of creating that strong pedestrian promenade and changing the car center front of the campus. Again, there's a lot of flexibility in this, this planning tool when you see it moving forward, because it's not about the final graphic that we show, it's about the content of the recommendations and what they solve. This is the idea of the art walk, so we could have an art walk, you've got exhibit opportunities, we have twenty or thirty spots, it could become, you come to campus and the first thing you do in orientation is go on the art walk. You get the map, you go on the art walk and see different installations where, where students and people are putting their, their products out there for display, or just a great way to, to identify all the building structures as part of a walking tour on campus. I must say, every time I.
No, no, after you're done.
Every time I come here, I see something new, and the, and the safety application that I just saw, walking in the front door, I mean, there's, these applications can just keep flourishing. Students are creating applications all the time, and an art walk could be a wonderful way to navigate across the campus. Yes, sir.
I'm still thinking in, in terms of the transportation drop-off center, or place. So the bus stop would be, the buses would come in the same, you're planning the same sort of bus arrival as what we have now?
No, we'd be moving the buses from coming in the front, front door.
To coming in where?
Coming around to the back, and coming in up Huron.
Did, did you, when you were talking to the people at the Middle College, identify how those students are, come to campus?
Well, students that.
For the most part.
Students that would be busing, would have to bus and come in on the backside, unless they're, or.
I'm just curious, with that particular constituency, how, how most of them are coming to campus?
I think most of them actually come in, they're dropped off right outside the TI Building. It's, if you're ever there, at like eight in the morning.
Okay.
There's like a parade of cars that come in and out, and they almost all come or dropped off by their parents.
Okay.
But there could be five, ten, handful of students, two dozen students that do take the public transportation.
Yeah, absolutely, there are some who take the bus.
And the ones that do take it would then be coming into the transit center, and that connection between the LA and the parking structure is that walkway that would then connect them from the transit center right into that, the two promenades in which they could make their way over to.
Well, it's actually a pretty short walk from, from that proposed transit.
So you're, when you're saying the transit drop-off, you're not including the drop-off of students, the Middle Technical College students in part of that drop-off? They would be dropped off elsewhere?
Operationally, if it made sense for that, those buses to be somewhere else and not in this transit center, but I would see all the buses coming to the transit center to make it clean. That's the intention.
So that would be, that would be buses only, and not car drop-off?
Well, no, no, good point. So it could be Uber drop-off, it could be Uber drop-off, it could be taxi drop-off, it could, I mean, anybody could use that to drop that off. So it's, so those, it's not just for the buses, it's, it's your public connection point for alternative. Autonomous vehicles, I mean, ten years from now, autonomous vehicles are coming on campus, they probably don't want to come to the front door, not that, I guess it won't be a problem, but, you know, so it's, it's kind of providing for that level of, what we don't know, but it's certainly not designed. We don't have a design at a planning level, but we do think that we want to relocate it. It's a pretty good spot because it's centralized.
The other thing that would be nice about it would be, I mean, you could program it into Google Maps and other digital databases, so that if somebody actually is navigating to the school, it navigates you to the transportation center. Right now, you just sort of, you know, you end up at a driveway and it stops.
Right.
And it would be kind of nice to have a.
And then you shortchange your Uber driver because you're asking to go on another fight.
Exactly, right, yeah, yeah. So it actually would be nice if you actually had a, a place.
And for those of us that went to the MCCA retreat, we heard President Brett Knight from Lansing Community College talk about ambient learning, and about how he placed architecture and all kinds of things on his campus, you know, internally and externally, but he talked about his, wasn't it? And he had sculptures, and so you can kind of see where we might consider doing those types of things.
Okay, so, the parking, and right now, there's, I don't know how many parking spaces are there for handicap, and that's by the, what building is that, TI?
TI.
TI Building. I don't know how many parking spots there are. So, what you're proposing, you know, different parking places with structures, not structures, but parking spaces, how many, or would you know how many handicap spaces would be available? Because we, we have quite a few, I think the growing number of people with some type of disability.
Yeah, we would never be below, it's, it's, it's more than just the requirements for, for barrier-free, but universal accessibility, so that's always a consideration. And there are also ways to, there are also ways to design, the final design for these spaces, instead of it just being what we would think of as a, as a barrier-free parking space that, and you have some of these spaces, you have a lot of them in one area, and when they're empty, nobody's parking in them, they just look like empty parking lots. Well, there are ways to design though, so that they can be universally accessible parking spaces that just look like cool places to hang out when there's no, nothing in it. But to answer your question specifically, we'll never push, I think you need to look at maybe some of where some of the barrier-free parking is, because typically it's just put in based on the formula, it's not always where it's needed to be. And there's not a lot of barrier-free parking that's that close to the student center. I mean, and so there are, there are certainly opportunities to look for, and VIP parking, somebody coming in for short VIP parking and access to your student center, we need to provide for that, we've identified that. And certainly we will identify quite heavily not just barrier-free parking, but universal accessibility across the campus. And so, as sort of the guideline moving forward. It's very important.
Explain what VIP parking is.
Well, so you have a, somebody's coming in, maybe there's a donor coming in, there are some places I know in, in the parking structure that are identified for certain visitors, but if you just had someone that was coming.
The governor.
The governor was coming in, now, the governor can kind of sort of park anywhere at any time. But, but sometimes there are important people coming to campus, and when you could just say, we've got, we've got five or six spots set up just for, for special parking, it's kind of a control, then it could, it could deal with a lot of different issues. If somebody was coming in, you need a special parking spot.
But there wouldn't be a lot, it'd be just a few num, a number of spots.
Yeah, that would be, yes, yes.
Just a few.
Because typically your VIP is, there's a small handful, you know, there's a hundred coming at once, yeah.
Sure, okay.
You could, you don't need those constantly, you could just put some cones and say, this is blocked off for today.
Yeah, and we've, and if you looked at one of the graphics, we actually had.
It's not like you need it.
We talked about that, because we want to create, and we haven't designed this beautiful plaza that you're going to have in front of the student center, and it's wonderful walk, and it's going to transform it, and the people's experience when they come to campus, like, I made the right choices, I love this place, the parents are like, oh, my kids are going to make, you know, it's wonderful. But there's a spot to do just that, and it's, it's sharing, it's sharing landmass without making a parking lot, but it's easily coned off. And there are things we can do in the ground plane with the materials that say, there's a VIP parking when somebody wants to park there, otherwise, it just looks like the rest of the plaza.
I'm just thinking, I'm just being the devil's advocate. So why would we want to make the student center look like the greatest place to hang out at, and, because we do have, inside of the student center building, we have a really nice area, so why would we want to have that outside? And congregation of students can lead to not getting to the classes on time, I'm just, just throwing this out.
It's fair, maybe the language is too strong, the way I described it, but, you know, it's a good point, I mean, yeah.
I mean.
Correct.
Yeah, I was a student, like a lot of us who were students, and so, everybody, your friend is hanging out, oh, I'm not going to go to class because we're having a good time, and so, not saying that doesn't happen inside, but with you, outside is a different, different situation, because they can just say, okay, I'm just going to go on home, and, you know, I just don't know how much congregation we want out there in front, because we've got all this traffic coming by constantly, and people looking over there saying, oh, wow, what's going on over there, you know? Not saying that, these are students, they don't know what's going on. So that, that's what my thought is at.
Yeah, as, as I was thinking of Trustee McKnight Morton's question about the parking for people with disabilities, I'm also looking at what now functions as a loading area for the bookstore, and being swept up into the plaza to the west of the student center. And I'm just wondering, is, is that a consideration we need to make? Is where's the bookstore going to be, and how do we make sure they have loading capabilities?
We're not moving the bookstore, and while you're changing the four-foot truck docks, I believe, to at-grade docks, certainly is the, has the capacity to, to function properly. We're, we're suggesting that, let's not build a separate drive, let's not build a separate dock, let's have a platform, there is an area on the west side of that student center that could function, and all the books and all the deliveries can happen, but we're going to, at the frequency it happens, or the time of day it happens, we're going to design that promenade, that east-west promenade, to be dual-purpose, H20 loaded, so you can put a truck on there, a heavy truck, you can drive it all the way up to the back of there, you can unload all your goods and all your wares, and then when it's gone, it still looks like an awesome place where people are walking, three, four people across as they're going from one class to the next. So I think there's a dual-purpose function there, and we're very specific about that, because we actually started to throw a little bit at one point, thought, oh, we've got to get a big drive down here, and it was like, we just wrecked some of the nicest part of campus, so we had to scrub all that out and say, no, no. Sometimes we get too linear on trying to provide a function for something that it's a truck dock. And backside of buildings on a campus are very complicated, because there is no backside on buildings when they're on a campus. So unless we create a back alleyway, which we did not want to do, so we think it's a dual-purpose. We think we could create a wonderful promenade that you could drive on any size truck and access the student center, so it's. I'm taking a lot of your time, and I'm sorry because you're.
No, I were asking your question.
This is good feedback, I really appreciate it, and, and thank you for all of your comments, they're good comments. Yeah, it's a challenge.
It is a challenge.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we want, whatever we decide on, we want it to be usable, and we want it to be correct, and not be trying to go back and make it, you know, change it and make it correct.
And, and when you think of the tool, when you, when you read the tool, when you read the, the planning update as a tool, think of it as, as a phased approach, and that the important thing again is what the issues are, and recommendations to solve those issues. And this graphic that I just put up here, sort of takes all of these, these labels and all these circles and all these things that, that you see on the campus. If you focus just on these little areas, and you think of the recommendations and how they impact just these small areas, the impact that that can have in terms of circulation and flow, connecting both pieces of your major campus together, creating identifiable outdoor spaces for students to, to increase the wayfinding activities once they get on campus, and even get them on campus to get the class more, if we can get them here. But we do recognize that the quality of the environment does have an impact on, on not just the success of the students, but faculty and staff and the individuals that are operating and maintaining and working in the facility. Like I said earlier, you have a beautiful campus, we could do a couple of minor moves to sort of knit all these pieces together, and then let's just let this fabric feed this fabric. I'm not trying to, we're not trying to create a, a private garden space, you have it, we just are some moves that you can make to help solve some of the other issues, you know, getting other food choices on campus, that isn't all in your pocket. It's not you having to build another cafeteria or build something. You don't have to build a coffee shop if you can convince or you can entice a developer to bring a coffee shop on campus. You don't want to build a residence, you don't want to build something that you, you don't want to be in that business of operating, you don't want to build a hotel because you're not in the business of operating a hotel. But if you can entice a developer to see the potential that this convention center has, and it could grow and get larger, and provide a hotel that you could now have visiting faculty or visiting students staying for six months or seven months, without having to build a residence, without having to maintain a residence, that's the way I think you want to look in the future. Any other questions?
Could you back to the picture before this? Okay, I just, thank you.
That's all the stuff, it's all the stuff in there.
That's everything.
So, the road, uh, let's see, we revitalize campus green, where you have the arrow. So, I know the proposal is to remove the street that is in front of the Damon Flowers Building, okay. But there's a street that goes up to the backside of the student center.
I think that's still there.
Is that still there? I can't quite, I can't tell.
It's, it's, let me see if we can get a better image for you. You see there's a, that's why we, when we get into these kind of graphs, we typically, we've got the gray blocks and then the tan-colored blocks. That's a pedestrian promenade, so that's a large, wide walking sidewalk that would be designed to carry the load of a large truck. A truck would easily drive up there and have access to the back of the student center.
Okay, so that's, that's what the gray block is.
Yeah, and the gray block itself is the parking sort of field for the truck dock service area.
Well, I, I bring that up because, as it is now, there are some handicap spaces there, the president parks there, and there's other activity, so, would she not be able to drive up that way to get to the backside up to her office?
Keep in mind, when we're looking at these planning graphics and these recommendations, that, these are very good questions, because you're now thinking about the, the program elements that will go into the physical design of that space, and you think, and this is great, I think, well, somebody parks there, all of those things would be accommodated in the final design of any one of these spaces. So even when I say something like, well, there could be a student terrace here, and you would say, well, what about that sidewalk? Of course we would have to maintain that sidewalk, and similarly, and it would be readdressed, is this the best place to park? Is this the, the, the most optimum place for the president to park? Is there another spot that might even be even better that's in the front, that would work better? And so that would certainly, so it's not that, we're not interning all the stones for the, for the infinite design details, because that has to be designed, that has to go through a design process as well. But from a planning process, these are good, solid, strong recommendations.
Better yet, we could make the president, I think this would be a very good and safe idea, the first experimental autonomous vehicle.
Oh, thank you.
Could be provided to her, so that she doesn't have to worry about such silliness as.
I would take that.
Parking or driving or anything.
That's a great idea.
Create a helicopter.
Thank you, thank you.
Drop in from the roof.
And I'll have more life insurance.
Yes, sir.
So, I just want some clarification. So the access to the loading area by the student center would be by coming around, around the GM, the Gundermeyer, and down that little thing where it's alternating yellow and blue, little rectangles into the rear, into where the loading dock is now?
Yes, it's really, it's exactly where the asphalt drive is right now. Now, it might be not exactly on top of it, but right now, there's, there's a little sidewalk, and there's a big asphalt driveway.
Right.
I can trust that most people will walk two or three next to each other, on the road, some on the sidewalk, where, so that's where it is.
So, but that's, that's going to be, function mostly as a pedestrian promenade, but be accessible to vehicles for loading?
I think that would be a very successful design to do, to change the feel, the quality, and still provide the function, and make a strong connection across to what's going on the other side behind the, the PO building, yes.
And we never wanted that to be a main entryway to campus.
Correct.
We actually kind of want to keep it, in fact, you know, you might even want to make it more limited access, you could conceivably put a little gate right there, you know, off that road, if they eliminate the road that goes.
Where the road kind of dead-ends on the.
Where now, where the plant and operations of Damon Flowers Building, if that road's gone, then you're going to have to have right there, you could have a little, given a gate or a limited access or something that says, authorized vehicles only from this point on, so.
Very common on campuses, very common. Even the Gundermeyer Building, the, the parking loading dock, I remember we did, we did it on that curve.
Right.
Especially couldn't look down the throat of the parking structure as you're walking Especially couldn't look down the throat of the parking structure as you're walking on campus.
Right.
But you have, you know, we've got to get trucks in these buildings.
Now, you're, just, as I understand it, these are concepts, and obviously, when, if we, for example, decided we wanted to build an administration building for the Middle College, there's a whole separate design review process and all the short strokes and nits and jots would have to...
Program development, schematic...
And cosmetically, however, you're not commenting on how this would look cosmetically or in a landscaping sense, you're talking about pure function at this point, correct? Okay, yeah.
As much as we'd love to get down into the details and design and sketch and draw...
Sure.
And we will have some of that, you will ultimately see, because we can't help ourselves, it helps to tell the story, so when I talk about this, there's some important pieces, I keep talking about the student terrace, as if everyone is just, their, their image is the same as the image that we've had in this, it's, we recognize it's not. That will be in the report, you will, you will finally see something, and I think this promenade is a really important piece, both the promenade that crosses the road...
Right.
And the one that runs east-west. These are important pieces of urban, of campus fabric that...
I mean, I've always felt that, you know, one of the elements on campus that is, you know, underutilized and difficult to utilize, is that green space between Morris Lawrence, the parking structure, and the student center building. I mean, it's really, it's beautiful, it's underutilized, there's really no reason for anybody to use it unless you happen to be walking from the student center building to the Morris Lawrence building, which some students do, but a lot of them don't. So, I mean, I do think to move some common space onto that area would be a nice use of that space and would get people to focus a little bit more on what is a very attractive feature on campus.
I agree.
Yeah, but, you know, it's just, it's, there's no reason for, you know, people need reasons to go places, you know? This would give people a reason to actually utilize it, so.
Yeah.
And I think the food truck idea is interesting, too, because, I mean, you know, yeah, interesting.
Any other, one more question?
So I'm looking, I'm intrigued by these mixed-use convention developments, and I'm particularly looking at option two, and wondering if you've done any work or looking into partnering, if we partnered there, what kind of parking would be needed for the convention use for the hotel or whatever, and if they, if the private developer would build the parking and we would have access to it?
I would think that...
Or if there would be some partner relationship with that?
We've done some preliminary massing and programming at a very high level, to do just that, to say, what's the square footage that we can put in here, knowing we need to park for it? And if we're parking for it, we're probably racking and stacking, so it's a cost, so it's probably a parking structure that's wrapped around, you know, it's tucked in there, and there's building facade in front of it, that, so it's, it would be all on the developer. I wouldn't suggest that you would want to be, if you're enticing someone to say, hey, would you be interested in, in, in this business model, here's an opportunity, we have, we have 10 years' worth of convention that's here, we have this facility across the street, we have our facility, and you need to find someone who's in the business of running hotel things or convention centers, and they're the ones...
And they could do underground parking potential as part of their development.
They could, they certainly could.
Well, this is way down the road, but we have certain, some interest in political concerns. Are all three of these sites in Superior Township?
I don't know.
That's a question.
I think they're all in Superior Township.
Then that's a political concern.
It's possible that the...
No, actually not, Rick.
No?
No, they're all in Ann Arbor Township?
Some of them straddle both, and some are right in Ann Arbor.
Okay, because that would be a limitation on development. They are...
Well, we've had some interesting developments that have done that, up in Rochester Hills, where they cross, they cross, and it is complicated, it's very complicated, but it does happen more often than you think.
They, although they, one thing they are, Ann Arbor Township hates, is parking lots. So if we're doing away with parking lots, something having to do with rainwater and stuff, they don't like this.
They want it discharged and absolutely...
Right, so, I mean, it may be that if we're doing away with parking spaces, they might actually like it, but you're saying that we would try to outsource this to a developer anyway, which is, by the way, very similar to what we're doing with the Health and Fitness Center, which we have, we built, I mean, I'm not sure if I would want, just as a practical matter, I would, I'm not sure we wouldn't want to own the building that we're building, rather than, especially if it's on campus, I would think that we would certainly collaborate with somebody on design, but we may want to own the building and lease it to, you know, a hotelier who would deal with that type of stuff, so. And I think when we were talking earlier, you said something about, and I, you know, we've always toyed with the concept of a dormitory, and I haven't heard you mention anything about that.
I, I did it very softly, you know, if the hotel was hotel, hotels and dormitories are very...
You mentioned that, like, hotels, senior centers, and, and, and dormitories are all sort of the same thing on some level, right?
You know, you can, yeah, I mean, you can long-term stay in hotels, hotels can convert very easily from just a hotel room to a student, you know, providing some common space at the end, and there's, it's, it's an easy floor plate to convert back and forth.
Right, right, right.
But it's a, it's a big leap to become a, you would like someone else to...
Well, there are probably also some issues, I mean, I don't know how the Ann Arbor Convention Bureau of Center folks would feel about us operating a hotel, I don't know if anybody would care particularly.
I haven't mentioned it.
Hmm?
I haven't mentioned it.
I wouldn't, although this is a public meeting, um, so...
But we're just talking about, this is a 10-year master plan.
Sure, sure, but, I mean, if, if, if it was potentially dormitory space part of the year, hotel space part of the year, and I'm not sure you could ever find a third party who would operate that type of operation, but, I mean, obviously during the summer months, we could fill up a hotel for probably at least four to five weeks out of the summer, maybe longer, you know, just with the convention folks who are here. The rest of the year, you know, presumably, I mean, you might be able to use some of that for dorms, but anyway, it's interesting.
Any other comments from the board?
I guess I, one question, and maybe Bill, you could help with this. These three options for the mixed-use convention development, which of those are in Ann Arbor Township? Do you see the map there?
Steven, do you mind putting up the, the one that shows all three, please? Sorry, it's coming towards the end there.
Yeah, there it is.
Great, so if you look down at, where Huron comes down to Clark...
Exactly. That's where it's at.
Um, and you were to draw a line from that corner up to where the middle of the soccer field is. That is, that is roughly the dividing line between Ann Arbor Township to the left or west, and Superior to the east, roughly, that's the dividing line.
So the, option one would be in Superior Township, option three would be in Ann Arbor Township?
A lot of it might be, but some of it...
That's why I said it kind of straddles. It kind of straddles.
And option two would be in both.
Now, that is, is that, that's St. Joe's property, that northern site, is it not?
If you're on Huron, right, if you're on Huron down at Clark...
No, the option one.
Oh, option one, option one.
So option one, that, where, where that is, that's our property, that is where the athletic fields are now.
Okay, so that is our property.
Yes, every, everything that's showing there to the left of that road that kind of goes upright is, is our property.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so everything is on our property.
And St. Joe's is to the east of that road.
Correct.
Just, I wanted to, Rick, if you're thinking about hotel occupancy, the hospital itself creates quite an ongoing demand throughout the year.
Right.
Good point.
Although I don't think, I think they could probably utilize any of these, but that would be, it would be interesting, it's an interesting site, just because it would kind of give us a, I mean, the Health and Fitness Center gets a lot of St. Joe's folks, and it would be an interesting sort of transition to the medical campus, and perhaps even a point of mingling, but I don't know.
Good point.
And also in terms of the impact on trees?
Right, yeah.
Option one is the least impact on trees.
Right.
Right.
But the most impact on soccer.
Well, potentially not, depending upon placement.
We don't want to go through that tree thing again, no. Not one, you know, Damon.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the board?
Interesting, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate, it's been fun, I want to tell you all the sessions that we've had over here with all of your, whether it's students, staff, operations, it's been very enjoyable.
It's been a pleasure working with you.
No, thank you.
With both of you, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
With your whole team, and Julie, you've done a great job, and so the next step is sharing this during the...
During August in-service.
At in-service.
An open house for faculty, staff.
Okay, then we'll come back with another draft for the board, almost like the final draft, after getting this input and what we hear from in-service, and then we could talk more if you want.
Plus, we can write you any input that we want.
Oh, my gosh, yes, absolutely. Any input you have, he said, you could write me, or, or just anything.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Black, Steven?
Good luck.
Okay. Up next, the college goals special report. President Blanca?
Yes, Julie, don't go too far.
Yeah.
So, usually we do this in our, at our June meeting, but we moved this to the July meeting. These are the accomplishments of our goals over the la, this past academic year. I don't want to take away yours, you talk, okay, because she does a lot of this work, and you should be the one who lead this, Julie. She may be, look at how fierce you are there, you know?
I'm sorry?
Fierce, you know?
We come before you every year and give you an update, as President Blanca said, and we were actually talking today, and said it's almost better doing it a little later than usual, because we, we, May is the usual timetable, which makes sense with the end of the academic year, but it was kind of nice because we were able to actually get almost a full year of data in here, because we're, you know, at the end of the spring/summer semester, so we were able to update a few things, which was, was actually nice. But we, we do this every year, as you know, and what we're presenting tonight, really, it'll, you know, be the leadership here at the table, but it really is just a small number of us providing highlights, and it represents the work of so many people, you know, committees and various groups on campus, and really faculty and staff across the college who have had a role in this, and have had, you know, a part to play in the development of, from the beginning of the development of the plan to making these initiatives happen. So a little bit of background, we'll be talking about both our strategic plan priorities and our annual college goals tonight, and in your packet, as you know, you should have this in your board binder, which is in your folder, in the, the pocket of the folder, and this summarizes both of those. We'll be giving you highlights of that tonight. And this all started with our strategic plan, shaping our future 2012 to 15. Those goals were completed, and the plan was kind of re-envisioned after that three-year cycle finished, and we are now winding up the three-year cycle of shaping our future together, which is the second phase of that plan, 2016 to 19. And those strategic goals really have been, kind of, they're long-term strategic institutional goals that now really have been completed or operationalized and are kind of part of the daily work of the college. And these are all aligned with our eight strategic plan priorities, which you've heard us talking about now from the very beginning to over on the right. And then the annual college goals are also aligned with those eight strategic plan priorities, and those are really overseen by the executive leadership team, and are pretty much put into action by people across campus, they're operational in nature, and they are accomplished through annual action steps. And so now we'll go through the eight priorities, and we'll be hearing from people around the table, starting with priority one, professional development and organizational health. I'll turn it over to Kim and Hearns and Chris Mahaly.
Okay, so one of the key things that we did complete this year was the implementation of a professional development system called CALPA, so all of the professional development across campus is tracked in the system, faculty and staff can register for events, we had an increase of 24% in our registrations, and we definitely had a good variety of programming across teaching, learning, engagement, wellness, and a really nice part of this strategy is that our teaching and learning center, as well as an advisory committee of faculty and staff, as well as faculty professional development, lead all of the programming, working with HR and IT, and just a lot of people across campus to make this all come to fruition every year, and every week, an update comes out with all the teaching and learning center activities for the week, and then people can sign up on their own.
Our professional development goals for employees focused on leadership skills for independent staff, technical training for faculty and staff, and diversity awareness campus-wide. Tied to this goal, we also look to increase our diversity in the applicant pool and hiring of faculty and staff. Under professional development, we designed a leadership development series for cohorts of our supervisory staff that will run this year into next. The series includes modules that address team building, team coaching, and management best practices, and the sessions are run by internal and external trainers. We offer technical skills trainings, which included training on software and systems for our faculty and staff. We introduced core technical skills onboarding for new hires, we had over 400 faculty and staff participate in the various software and systems trainings, which was 100% increase in participation over last year, and we also had over 500 faculty members participate in blackboard training. Diversity training was extended to our employees through TLC to include topics such as diversity, and inclusion, civility in the workplace, and teaching strategies. We also focused efforts on diversity training for search committees. We enhanced our orientation for search committees, which included an implicit bias training segment, which offered a lot of good discussion among search committee members. In regard to efforts to promote diversity in recruitment and hiring, while we met our goal of increasing total recruitment of diverse applicants by 2%, we really saw a measurable increase in the recruiting of diverse applicants for faculty and administrative positions, which included the levels of dean, associate vice president, and vice president. We saw an average of 37% of the diverse applicant pool in these areas, with one dean search that resulted in a 45% diverse applicant pool. Lastly, President Blanca and Vice President Beltry hosted a diversity and inclusion in the workplace collaborative with community college presidents and HR leaders to discuss the challenges that we have and establish practices for partnering on diversity initiatives.
Thank you.
We had some executive training with a legal specialist, Larry Barkoff identified a law specialist in Title X, and that she was able to come to campus last fall and provide training on Title IX to our executive leadership team. We, over this past year, used the Not Anymore video, which is a video on sexual assault awareness specifically for community college students, and that was provided and given to students for fall, winter, and during spring/summer. We also, Public Safety also launched the WCC Safe app, and you'll see, there's a lot of banners that just went up today on campus. It's an app on the, on the student's phone that staff and students can use, and it allows them to text Public Safety, it also provides a lot of safety information at the students' fingertips. The other thing we did under Public Safety, we completed the hiring of a diverse group of our public, or, excuse me, our campus resource officers, we instituted the Clemis software system. You can see that we had, we had a few Coffee with the Cop sessions, which allowed our students and staff to meet with our police officers, and you see Matt Lyes there behind the banner, and we also, they organized, our public safety staff organized a very positive countywide tabletop exercise with our public safety partners, that we got a lot of compliments on from our partners in the county, because that, that type of event had not been organized in a number of years, and so it brought a lot of our partners together on campus for that tabletop exercise.
Amy, go ahead.
I'm happy to see this Coffee with the Cop, how many, do you have a sense of, or how many students participated, and how many of those are...
We've had like 40 to 50 per session.
And how many sessions?
We've had three.
Three sessions?
Yep.
Great.
Yeah, we'll continue to do those.
Okay, we are aggressively moving to our... Okay, we are aggressively moving to our 20 by 20 goal. And what you'll see here on the slides is that we continue to do a lot of hard work to get those 2% and 3% increases from semester to semester in retention. We really focused this summer on promoting year-round attendance for our students to really help them gain momentum and move towards completion. One of our key cohort groups are scholarship students that we've been focusing on. For Fall 18, we have a 95% retention rate, and an increase in the average number of credit hours those students are taking, as well as our Fall 17 cohort, 79% of those students are on target and have earned 24-plus credits. We also saw a 16% increase in the number of degrees and graduates, which netted in 2,319 certificates and degrees in the 2018-19 year. Some of the internal things that we've done, or more policy-related things from a student success standpoint, is this year, from, for our incoming new students, we implemented high school GPA for placement. So, students who come in with a 3.0 or greater will get placed in a college-level course in reading and writing, as they had been already doing in math. We also created a student success task force that includes faculty, as well as staff and advisors, to talk about what things we can do to remove barriers for our students. And we also implemented a student success siren to communicate updates and faculty, updates and nudges to faculty to nudge and encourage students to register, and to kind of keep them going. Another thing that we had discussed with the board was prerequisites. We looked at the prerequisites for many of our occupational courses, and what we did was we moved some of those prerequisites or changed them to make them match what they should be at a reading and writing level, so that more students would have access to occupational courses their first semester here at college. We expanded our success coaching model, which VP Blakey will talk a little bit more about. And one really big project that we implemented closing out the year was we consolidated tutoring under academics and created our learning commons. So, our computer commons is now a combination of learning support services from an academic standpoint for students.
As DP Hearns noted, we have expanded our coaching model. We focus on kind of classes that, where we know that students have needs. So, we have a career and technical coach working with students in our occupational areas, as well as nursing students. We have a coach for our reading, our developmental reading sequence, which is the ACS classes. We also have a coach in our developmental English sequence. We have a coach that's funded through the State of Michigan for our fostered youth who have transitioned to college. We have a coach for, we have a partnership with the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation in scholarship students that they provide to the college. We have a coach for those individuals as well. Madelp Transitions, which is our GED preparation program, and they have students that are taking technical programs with that. They have a coach with that group of students. And then this winter, we identified, we know that we have students that are only taking online courses. So, for students who are taking two or more online classes, we identified an online coach. And that's been a really good tool for faculty, because we have our online faculty referring students to that coach for additional support.
These coaches, are those students, the coaches?
No, they're staff.
And are they faculty or other staff, counselors? I'm just curious.
No, they're, they're just success coaches. So, they're just part-time, full-time, and then part-time administrative staffs.
Okay, so that's a separate area that we've hired people to fill those roles?
Yes.
A major initiative going on right now is preparing for our 2020 reaffirmation accreditation by the Higher Learning Commission. That visit is coming next March of 2020, and a lot's been going on to start preparing for that. This year, in-service, we focused on the college mission. We had sort of a mission possible theme and initiative happening. And we've been introducing the HLC criteria and the process for reaffirmation at faculty meetings and other group meetings. And the summer, Vice President Hearns and I have been leading some faculty-staff group workshop meetings to kind of dig deep into the criteria and get input and feedback through these small group sessions that have been really helpful. And lastly, we've launched our federal compliance team that's also part of that process. Another part of HLC accreditation for us is participation in their Assessment Academy. We completed year three of four for that activity. And as part of that team's work, completion of our Gen Ed data collection happened, and assessment for revised Gen Ed areas has been underway. And with the help of the academy team, too, participation in the number of work sessions to provide support for faculty with assessment have more than doubled in the past year.
A key element of student success is, or student success goal is diversity and inclusion. You'll see a picture here of Dr. Brian McDoosbury, who kicked off the year for us at our in-service with the conversation with faculty about creating a classroom of belongingness and inclusiveness. Some other key highlights from a diversity and inclusion standpoint is that we definitely increased the amount of professional development that we had around diversity from a hiring standpoint, all the way teaching and things that happen in the classroom. Our African-American male students, our student group there, we saw an increase in the students' retention who were in the program versus those who were not, and that's a program that we will be continuing. Another big goal for us this year was to increase the diversity of schools in which we receive scholarship applications. We received 40% increase from Lincoln Consolidated Schools in scholarship applications, and 110, 110% increase in scholarship applications from Ypsilanti schools. In November of 2018, we launched our Center of Excellence. And of course, our Health Division has continued to work and hold up that excellence. And this year, launching a new LPN to our end program, as well as launching a medical assisting program, which is in partnership with one of our industry partners. Our NCLEX scores, we're very proud of those. The first time pass rates for our students was 85.71%. In our traditional students, who are finishing up the curriculum that we had previously, but in our new curriculum, we're very proud to tout that the new NCLEX test scores, which is a new test and new curriculum, is 92.59%. Again, we have another 2020 goal, which we've actually already met. Our goal was to have 20 OERs by 2020. And this fall, we'll be launching two new OERs that helps us reach that 20 goal. We had an increase of 28.4% in the amount of savings that our students continue to have in the adoption of OERs across our courses. And we're also proud to state that we generated more savings and more students impact as far as OERs across the state.
We continue to look at international opportunities to enrich our environment here on campus. We've continued our collaboration with Guido Jao-Tong Polytechnic Institute. We had a delegation from their campus here in September of 2018. I think some of you got a chance to meet them. There's a photo there of some of them. And then, that was followed up with the sharing of a pilot for non-credit virtual course exchange that took place in the spring/summer of this, just this past year. We also have an exploratory visit planned for some of their students to take place in 2019-20. We continue to work on study abroad programs. As you might recall, we had a successful trip take place about a year ago in the summer of 2018 to Spain with our photography faculty, Don Worthman, in partnership with GEO and University of Oregon. And then, we just had a trip get back really recently from the United Kingdom in history and anthropology with faculty members Chris Barrett and Ian Rush.
Our goal here was to develop increased options for flexibility to meet our student needs. This year, we developed eight accelerated programs, both face-to-face and online for students. We also had a 47% increase in the number of accelerated courses that we will be offering this fall. We also launched our annual course schedule for all divisions that will help students be able to plan for the whole year which classes they'll be taking, when, and how.
So, we had a number of initiatives in visibility and branding. You might remember about two years ago, Professor Mike Galia partnered with Pearson to do digital badges. Last year, we did a partnership with parchment, where we sent digital diplomas out to all of our students, and we're continuing to do that. And then, this year, we've scaled that up to, we're now offering 10 digital badges. And we do that through a system that we built in-house, where we can upload a data file. It sends an email out to the students. The students are able to download their digital badge. It has their name on it, and they can share that on social media, and it's not copyable to other people's profiles. So, it's individual and unique to the individual. We've also increased our presence at high-profile events. It was the third year we were at the North American International Auto Show. We had an opportunity to meet with Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist at the auto show, as well as Governor Whitmer, and subsequently, both of them toured the campus at our ATC. After the auto show event, we also partnered with MEDC on a panel at the auto show, and subsequently, MEDC brought a group of journalists here, including Forbes, that did an article on the ATCs for Forbes Online. So, I really mentioned those as examples of how, when we do these larger events, we don't always see the payoff the day of or at the event, but it's something that pays off down the line. We've seen that through our participation over the years. We also are focused on positioning the college as a STEAM institution, as well as STEM. So, in the STEM area, we increased our STEM cohort from 16 students in 2018 to 35 this year. We also promoted that program through our on-the-record publication launch, and also through the use of our video monitors. And we also had a STEM Week event that drew more than 200 students and community members. And we're in the process of planning for this year's STEM event, which we are, you know, planning to be bigger and better than last year. We also, in terms of making, creating more visibility and awareness around resources for students, we hosted a Facebook Live Q&amp;A event. We did three segments with financial aid, student records, and counseling, and those videos were viewed more than 10,000 times on Facebook. We also created a new tuition savings calendar online that allows students to go in and see exactly how much they would save by spending, by spending two years at Washtenaw Community College and getting an associate's versus four years at another school. We've also increased our focus and content to the video monitors around campus. So, that was an initiative that actually started in October of last year. So, in nine months, we've done about 27 videos on those monitors, and we've had 97 announcements that we've run on the monitors, kind of critical announcements about dates. We're also working on ambient learning environments. So, we've, we have launched an ambient learning environment in LA, which is focused on the challenger. And in TI, we have a whole hallway that focuses on careers in the health sciences. So, that's an opportunity to kind of reinforce the reason the students are in those programs, and they can kind of get a sense of the careers that they can look forward to.
So, with workforce development, as you know, we're always looking to increase our touch with business and industry and create a strong connection. So, the first thing that we wanted to do was to increase experiential learning opportunities with, through employer postings and through internships. So, number one, we transformed the Career Services Office to a Career Transitions Office. And that is where we absolutely went into the community and said, "This is an opportunity for you now to have a connection with us, and for business and industry to come in and have a connection with us, so that we could help folks identify where their gaps were in their resumes in terms of their skill sets, and then be able to connect to the college in some way, whether it be through academic credit or through non-credit professional development training, to be able to fill those skill sets, to be able to move up in the career ladder." So, that was a, that was a really great initiative this year. We saw 1,177 students and appointments, 366 walk-ins this year. It's an 18% increase, and I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that we moved over back to the Student Center. So, having that new space renovated and having them there really has helped, I think, to create an increase. We also increased our experiential learning student alumni placements to, up to 124, 41% over last year. We expanded services through digital services. So, a lot of students are taking classes completely online or partially online. So, the opportunity to be able to allow them to have access in a digital way to the college for, whether it be through one-on-one access to somebody that's going to advise them based on their resume, et cetera, or have webinars that talk to them about the types of things that they need to do with their job search, et cetera, allowed us to increase. We participated for the first time in the Michigan Virtual Career Fair. That's never happened in the State of Michigan before, and this was the first one. So, our students were able to participate. And we increased job registered on the Career Connection Job Board by almost 30%, which was 3,562 jobs. So, second is the increase in the skilled trades economic development opportunities. And I have to give kudos, a shout-out to Marilyn Donovan and her team, because we had more than 3,000 UA and 800 ironworkers here in 2018. In addition to that, we launched, through Marilyn's team, we launched another new trade union partnership through the United Union of Roofers, Waterproofers, and Allied Workers. And August 16th, we will have a signing ceremony, adding them to our group of trade unions on campus. We completed the first full year of the OPCMIA, the Operative Plasters and the Cement Masons, on campus, and that was very, very successful. They loved Washtenaw. They loved it, and of course, they love Marilyn and her team. They did a great job. And we also extended the sprinkler fitter contract this year. And what we're doing is that we're expanding training into the southern states. Because of that, we're going to increase the program by 800 annual enrollments with at least, we're thinking, an additional $125,000 in revenue annually. With regard to apprenticeship plan addressing all apprenticeship needs, we enrolled 73, 23 of them new apprentices in 2018-19 with 22 unique employers. Five of them were new in manufacturing, IT, and construction. We hosted registered, and a registered apprenticeship event during apprenticeship week on campus. And Marilyn did a great job pulling our partners in, and it was apprenticeship in a day, where we brought the employers in, and they were able to file for apprenticeship here on the campus with having all the resources available to them in one day. We developed an apprenticeship model for implementation to allow employers three options to choose to meet their needs, and that was done in collaboration with college credit. It was a really nice opportunity to be able for Kim and ICE teams to kind of work together and try to figure out three different models to meet employers' needs through apprenticeship.
How wide a radius do you draw from for employers that come to this?
That come to the community college?
Yeah.
We're in Livingston County, we're in Lenawee County, we're in Washtenaw County, and Western Wayne Counties. And we also expanded the UAW apprenticeship programs at two major manufacturers this year. In addition to that, on the workforce development side, this was kind of exciting. We were able to put in place MYCAA funding, which is military funding for spouses of active military to be able to take non-credit training at the college. So, that's been tremendous for us. We developed and we delivered a training proposal as part of establishing a regional training partnership with Bushes, and we'll be looking to implement that this year. We're hoping that, I think that they're going to go after a Going Pro Fund grant to be able to fund the apprenticeship model. We created a contract training model for stage-two companies in advanced manufacturing. Looking at those smaller guys, and we had through focus groups, one of the things that's hard for them is paying for contract training. So, an option is a quasi-contract training opportunity, where they can join through a membership and have open enrollment classes available just to their group. membership and have open enrollment classes available just to their groups so that they can afford onesies and twosies to come to the college to take classes in an affordable way. We've launched two Michigan New Jobs Training Program grants and that is tolling approximately $200,000 over the next three years. And we finalized a partner agreement with the international online training provider, World Education. Why is this important? It's important because now the emerging technology classes that we've been creating as part of the CCAT grant, we will now be able to put on an international online platform and advertise those and market them throughout the world. And finally, as we look at advanced transportation, basically, we've done a lot of things this year and we tried to narrow it down as much as we could with, with key highlights. First of all, as you know, we were approved for the next phase of the state capital life funding, the construction of the ATC mobility facility with draft plans presented to the board and we'll be obviously hearing more about that. We were recognized this year by the United States Department of Transportation in a white paper for developing best practices in an emerging industry as a community college. We also, WCC, was represented on the Intelligent Transportation Society of Michigan, the Board of Directors. I'm serving on that group, as well as the Board of Directors of Ann Arbor-Ipsilanti Local Development Finance Authority for the Smart Zone. We presented at the North American International Auto Show and hosted Planet M Automobility Exhibits, welcoming Governor Whitmer and Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist, as Brendan mentioned. Dean Brandon Tucker was appointed to the Michigan Council on Future Mobility by Governor Snyder. We procured the ACE Automotive Cybersecurity Education Hacking Workbench. I think you will probably all remember that presentation. We also presented at the ITS America Annual Meeting and ITS Michigan Webinar on Training for Incumbent Workers. In addition to that, we hosted the Center for Automotive Research, CAR, on the Michigan Connected and O'Thomas Working Group Meeting. And we hosted the CCAT Global Symposium with the University of Michigan at WCC.
One of the things with our academic partnerships was to, we had the goal of working with our, some of our high school partners to increase preparedness of incoming students from local high schools. We continue to support Ipsilani High School with their middle college program. And so we partnered with them and the students come in and test early with Alex, which is the tool that we use for assessing and preparing students to know their math skills. And so we saw an increase of 80% of the students duly enrolled, high school students from Ipsilani High School who were able to enroll in a college-level math course between winter 18 and winter 19. Our bridge program, which is just wrapping up this week, which is a four-week program that meets three hours a day, five days a week, that helps students with soft skills as well as reading, writing, and math. We had an all-time high number of 42 students who accessed and enrolled that program this summer. And of those 42, 20 were enrolled in a math component. Before, we just started the math component last summer. So we've seen an increase in the number of students who are able to access that component because they're already getting their reading and writing skills up. We continue to also support our STEM scholars. We know with students come in, sometimes they don't have the math level they need to access the college-level math and chemistry or science classes that they need. So we had a one-week summer boot camp right before the semester started to help those students increase those math skills. It was free for participants and we're also focusing that with our incoming scholarship students, again, so they can access the college, the classes that they need the first semester instead of waiting for a later semester. We also had...
I see that a lot of attention was for the Ipsy students and I'm really glad to see that. But what about the other surrounding high school students? Were they involved in any of this?
They're invited to the bridge program. We have, for our bridge program, we primarily have Pathways, the Ann Arbor Pathways, the Alternative High School in Ann Arbor, the Waves students who are, that's the Washtenaw Alternative Virtual Education Program. That's, we have Waves students, we have students from Lincoln, and we have students from Ipsy. So those are the students and we have a couple of students from Belleville. So those are all the students that were accessing our bridge program this summer.
Great, thank you. We'll share.
We've had, as we've focused on graduation and completion, we've had an increase in 38% of the number of students who have completed the Michigan Transfer Agreement over the last year. And so we're really happy with that. And we've also had, well, then you can talk more about...
Okay. One of the, one of the things that we implemented this year that was very important and should net a lot of results for our students this year is a new associates in general studies. You all approved that degree. It'll help students to have a lot more flexibility in the courses that they take and the options they have to kind of try things out as they develop a career path or transfer. Another very important faculty-led project this year that will continue this coming year as well is the reimagining of liberal arts. Dean Good challenged the faculty with the question, 20 years from now, what do we hope students will remember from our courses? So we're really looking at our general education courses and our humanity courses to figure out, how do we make sure that we make them relevant to students and not something that people more often than not think is not necessary? A very unique thing that came out of that work is the launch of a liberal arts and science advisory board. It's something for us to be very proud of as a college because it's very unique. Most advisory boards only exist in occupational programs, but we've had some great response from the business community to support and work with us in our liberal arts area. And then the faculty are wrapping up right now, as Julie mentioned, in regards to HLC, the completion of the college-wide general education assessment. As far as transfer partnerships, we want to make sure that we continue to have a variety of options for our students. We're establishing some much stronger and new relationships with Oakland University and Wayne State. We'll be signing in two weeks our first articulation agreement with Oakland University. Our relationships with U of M, Michigan State, Wayne State, as well as Western Michigan University and Mont Community College are really strengthening as we work with them closely with our STEM scholars and the LSAMP grant. And then we also have work that's in the, in the process right now or pending is a four-year pathway program in engineering technology with Wayne State University.
With our academic partnerships with our local high schools, we've expanded our programming. We're a partner, an academic partner with the Livingston County Middle College. And so we've expanded the programming besides cybersecurity and construction technology. We've included, added mechatronics, machine tool, and welding. In fact, we have some welding students that are transferring to us from Mont because they were not able to finish their program and so they're finishing up the program with us, which we're excited about. We also are serving as Dexter Community Schools, is expanding and adding a middle college to their programming as well. And so we're the post-secondary partner and we just found out today that the state has approved that application and so we will be having their middle college opening in fall of '20. And then we've increased, we continue to focus on our duly enrolled high school students and we increased those students by 19% from fall '17 to fall '18.
So when we do the partnership with Dexter Community Schools as a post-secondary partner, I know for the technical middle college here, it's geographically simple for them to take classes here and at the high school, right?
Correct.
How do we do that for Dexter students? Do they do night classes or online or what do, how do they do that?
We'll do a variety of ways, but they want to focus on our technical programs and so they will be transporting the students to, from Dexter to us. There might be a couple of classes that we'll offer in Dexter, but they'll primarily be bringing the students to campus so they can access our labs and technical classes.
Thank you.
The foundation continued to increase its engagement with the community this past year and to focus on major gifts for the purpose of raising more money so we can get more money out. The results were substantially better. The past year, we were up in total fundraising by 142% to $1.3 million. A 61% increase in scholarship fundraising to over $700,000, so we indeed can give out more money. We also closed up 11 new endowed scholarships and we're now closing in on 300 of those in the, in the foundation. The Emergency Fund continues to be a source of interest in the community and we're raising money for that, but we're also giving out money to the students that come to us. 90 students received help in the amount of about $19,000 last year. July 1 last year, we started a finish line scholarship and we asked students that had completed 75% of their degree requirements to come back if they had left for financial reasons or perhaps other reasons. And we reached out to about 250 students for the first round. 73 came and registered, 20 already graduated, which is, I think, a really great point for that scholarship. And alumni engagement increased, we're adding new events and we're reaching out. The Alumni Association grew to up to 1,300 members now, but we're just starting, it's only two years old. And we'll continue to reach out to our alumni. It's a great source of pride for them and it's also a great source of future fundraising.
How did the petition go for a $20.18 contribution?
$20.19. It went very well. We got dozens of students that went, went for it, plus one of our foundation board members matched it, two-for-one. So it really was a great success and I think it's, again, students were proud to give for their college year. Thank you.
In our ongoing effort in the budgeting process to identify priorities and then find ways to fund them, in this past year, the board had approved for fiscal '20 yet another priority area, and that was for classroom renovation. So that's on top of technology, on top of deferred maintenance, equipment, now we had a classroom. So that was an extra $400,000 on top of an existing furniture fund. We're in the midst of, of studying kind of best practices within the classroom in terms of furniture and layout and we're then going to begin to start to utilize those funds. We also increased the deferred maintenance fund to $2.5 million for fiscal '20, which was a very important increase. That was a 25% increase in the annual deferred maintenance fund. We've also been looking at other alternative revenue sources for the college, ways that we, that we can better utilize our assets to generate revenue to help to offset the need to increase tuition and fees across campus. We've identified about three or four of those areas, we're right in the middle of studying those, and we'll be bringing those some to the board within this next year for that. And then lastly, in the theme of student affordability, our, our tenure contract with Barnes &amp; Noble is up. We have formed an RFP committee, we've gone out for bid. We had an extensive research effort this past year to say, what are the key requirements of the service levels and the goals we want to achieve in terms of the things that we offer within the bookstore? We put that into an RFP, we've gone out for a bid, we got a number of proposals in, we have formed a committee that include four or five faculty along, along with administrators. We're vetting that process now and we'll be bringing a recommendation to the board later in this year. But one of the key focuses, and we're really trying to break the mold, is around affordability. How do we bring to our students the very lowest cost for those resources, yet the highest level of service? And how do we support our faculty in, in their goal to bring the very best materials into the classroom?
So under information technology, as you're aware, we did IT Sustainability Plan where we studied, developed, and launched our new system. We did a process assessment and redesigned for key projects in HR and payroll so we could automate some of those processes. And in student services, we have continued the implementation of Target X for better monitoring and communicating with students. And we completed our computer security assessment and we identified carriers, key areas for improvement and developed initiatives toward completion on some of the cybersecurity issues.
Question?
Along with this, I guess this is, I've been wondering, how many of the IT staff, former staff members of the college went to work for Alucion of the 31 staff that we had?
I don't know if that's finalized yet, but...
Do we know how many have at this point?
About 10.
Roughly a third.
Okay. And along with that, how many people accepted buyout packages?
Who were eligible? Do we know?
All but five. All but five.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
In the world of facilities, we just talked extensively about the master plan, but this is just a reminder that, you know, we accomplished the goals that we had set for this year of gaining extensive input, including, you know, getting out there this kind of environmental scan campus-wide that was, you know, widely available on campus and reviewing everything that Elder Con Associates gave back to us. And we look forward to seeing what they bring to faculty and staff at the end of August for the next phase.
The college has a very strong sustainability committee that's been, been ongoing for years. And really, the fruits of their work can be seen in three areas. One is that the college received a bronze rating for advancement of sustainability in higher education, which was a great achievement for the college. Also, for the third year, that we were recognized from the Aberdeen Foundation Tree Campus USA. And finally, we hosted in 2019 a climate summit, which was, which was a great focus point for the college.
So community development. First of all, we ended up on the Community Development Strategic Committee, developed a pilot project model plan for Willow Run for low-income adults and that was completed for implementation. And in, as part of that, we completed a public-private model for delivery of entry-level employment and accelerated certificates to low-income students. In addition to that, workforce development implemented an affordable housing outreach strategy for entry-level employment training with Kennedy Care. That was the first group that we launched that with. We also co-hosted the A2Y Talent Summit that was focused on low-income students or low-income adults and workforce development. We implemented year one of the Coordinated Funding Grant for Academic Support at Parkridge and that was thanks to Shelley Zerboz and Anthony Williamson. They did a great job on that. So we got year one and we got, we have the second year funded, so we're going to be implementing next year. And we also continued outreach through Parkridge and the Harriet Centers. And as we move to the next, the next slide, you'll see that as part of that outreach, we were successful in increasing participation by 41% at the Parkridge Center. And you can see the numbers with summer camps, 93 in drill team and the number of things that we do out there. And Lyndall also turned...
And so for our college credit programming, we had Campus Explorer and our Summer Bridge, which we mentioned earlier. And then for our program at Ipsilani High School that we offer, we have our SENA program, our Certified Nursing Assistant Program, and we were able to add healthcare terminology to CPR for that six-credit program. And we also have our Intro to Manufacturing, which is a two-semester certificate program that we offer to our Ipsilani, Lincoln, and Waves students. And then our, for our adults, we have that Certified Nursing Assistant Program that we run at Ipsilani High School in the evenings for adults in the area. And then we have our ESL and JD programs that we're running at Ipsilani Township Community Center as well as at Parkridge.
I just want to say, first of all, this, this here goals and strategic plan accomplishments is very, very good. Well done. And everyone spoke highly of it through your presentation. I really appreciate what you've done with this because you put a lot of work into this. I appreciate you all. Thank you so much. A lot of things were in here, a lot of things to digest and go over again. But one of the things I want to say, I am so happy to hear about Ipsy High School and Parkridge Center. The college has really stepped up tenfold. And Rick and I know where it was, don't we? And Rick and I, at that time, we talked about Parkridge and Ipsy High School, of what could be done and how we can come up with different strategies. Through the years, it's been a slow... Through the years, it's been a slow process, and I see results in these numbers. And I know it's going to get better as long as our institution is still involved with them. I'm not saying it won't, but I really believe that, because we're investing in these students. And these students are going to be coming to here, and that's what we want. And they're going to be productive adults. So I really, really appreciate all that is being done in that region just to east of us. I really appreciate this. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Bill.
Along those same lines, what accounts for the marked increase in scholarship applications in Lincoln and Ipsalanti schools? I was impressed with that number.
Outreach. I had the cell phone numbers of the principals.
I should have known.
They get text messages.
Well done.
Really. It's like, okay, we're a week out. Hey, guys, do you know how many applications we have? It really helps.
It was good to see.
These people are amazing. That's just me. I just feel so happy about this.
Just one comment regarding academic partnerships. One of the things that came out of the MCCA conference last week was MCCA wants to tackle all these thousands of articulation agreements that our colleges are making. Now, we had a tremendous triumph with MTA, but they also want to tackle all the other stuff, too. So I'm excited about that prospect, because I would love, you know, accounting. How many articulation agreements do you need for accounting? You don't need a thousand. So I think that that's, you know, a really, you know, important thing that they're tackling, and you might want to look to that.
Well, our faculty are all sitting on all of those committees and have been working with the Student Success Center out of MCCA. And so one good thing is that we've always had very strong articulation agreements, because we've done things like MTA. But the faculty in psychology, in math, in business, in communication, they all have been going up to Lansing and meeting with the four-year universities and other community colleges to participate in that project. So we're making some really, really good headway in that area.
It was really good, what you're saying, because it's really good to see the universities are trying to partner with us. And I think that's a real big step, even though Eastern has. But getting these others on board is great.
Right. MCCA is working very hard to get them to work with us.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for this? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to reports, tab B, the Personnel Recommendations. Tab B, the recommendations that the Board of Trustees approved, the Personnel Recommendations as listed. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor, or I'm sorry, any discussion on this first, on the Personnel Recommendation? No questions or comments on this?
Oh, I do want to ask a question of Foundation Christine Casillo. How do you pronounce her last name? And I just want to know, is she going to be replaced, or what's going to happen with that piece?
Replacement?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? All in favor of approving the recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to tab C. Tab C, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees extend the appointment of Dr. Rose B. Blanca as President and Chief Executive Officer to June thirtieth, 2022. Her salary be set at two-twenty-four oh nine seven, that she receive the opportunity to take paid bereavement leave at a time before January one, 2020, and that the Chair of the Board of Trustees be authorized to sign a contract with Dr. Blanca on behalf of the Board. Do I hear a motion for this?
So moved. Support.
Okay. Any discussion on tab C? Questions, discussion? All right. Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Frasier Davis?
Yes.
Secretary DeVardy?
Yes.
Trustee Lindau?
Yes.
Trustee Knight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to tab D, the Facilities Development Report. David Johnson, anything you want to add here?
Just a couple of highlights. Item seven regarding the boiler replacement for ML. That is right on track. Our goal is to have the boilers back in operation before Labor Day for that, and we're right on track for that. Also, regarding the women's hot tub, we had a serious leak that we finally found. It took us about two weeks to find it. We found it. Good news is, it was not in a location buried underneath the floors. One thing that I will say is that upon further assessment of not only the hot tub, but of a lot of the work, that a lot of the work in the original construction, it was less than stellar quality. And so a lot of the repairs that we're starting to see now are probably a good five to seven years ahead of schedule. And so I would anticipate that we'll be bringing deferred maintenance projects back to the Board as we get into the next couple of years here, just to keep the fitness center up to par. It's just the reality, and we've got a commitment to make that work. The good news is that membership is very, very strong. Customer satisfaction scores are very high, and so the original charge by the Board for the fitness center to be self-sustaining financially, we don't see any issue with that, even with the deferred maintenance.
What's the age?
The age was two thousand and seven is when it was opened, so about twelve, twelve years.
Okay. But don't you think a lot of it has to do with a lot of the use by, you know?
It is high, high use, but some of the years, for instance, the hot tubs. The hot tub, the construction of the hot tubs was not, as I said, at the level that we think that it should have been. The corrosion was much higher than it should have been. But those are issues that we will address. We have major projects on slate for next year, including the locker rooms, which have to be replaced.
So Gaiman told me that. I just want you to know. He mentioned that to me when I was hired, that we may have some issues there with time.
Yeah. Chris.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dave.
Just a question. So the contractor that did the building, are we working with them? Are they contracting with us anymore?
No. No, no. We have moved on. I mean, they certainly were, I mean, at the time, it was fine work at the time, but as you start to get into the underneath elements of construction, right? There are elements that we would have done differently if we had known it at the time. And also, as trustee McKnight Ward mentioned, it's really high usage. The center is at capacity, except for a couple hours a day. It's at capacity, which is pretty amazing.
Well, I would consider this a kind of a black mark on the contractor, though, in terms of when we look at them for future bids.
I think it wasn't just on the contractor. Also, I would say it was in the design. We had the goal to make it as green of a building as we could. And in doing so, it required design elements that were not ahead of their time, but leading edge of their time. And so the combination of the design elements, the operations, and very high usage creates the center to work out at a faster pace.
Any other questions on facilities? All right. Thank you. Moving on to the remarks for the Board of Trustees. Would anyone like to say anything? Anybody?
Traverse City?
Yeah, Traverse City.
Several of us went to the Community College Conference in Traverse City at the Grand Trevers Resort. There were a series of speakers there. There were some data that I found very interesting, the fact that fifty-two percent of the college graduates in the country enrolled first at a community college. That was a very good statistic. Richard Florida was there, who is the author of the Rise of the Creative Class. Some people may know Richard Florida as an accomplished author. He points out that the Chicago to Pittsburgh corridor is one of the largest, tenth-largest economy in the world. And he said that sub-national polling has established Ann Arbor as the fourth-most creative economy in the country. So that really put us on the map. And one other thing that he shared that I thought was interesting was that eighty percent of law enforcement personnel in the country today did their training at community colleges, and fifty percent of the nurses that are employed are products of community colleges, all by way of reinforcing the work that we do is very important in launching people and getting them on the on-ramp. Did I cover it well, Rose?
Very good. You did great.
Yeah, I was up there at that conference, too. And other topics that were talked about a lot were student success, particularly food insecurity, homelessness, and transportation. Those seem to be really big, top issues for student success. For food insecurity, they suggested trying to find ways to normalize how you offer and give out food. So don't, like, target people because they feel self-conscious. Try to normalize it in a way that it looks like all students are being offered a food opportunity or something. I don't know how you do it, but they just had these ideas of trying to normalize and streamline things. And they said, for transportation, one example was for this college's application, they put right on the application, "Do you need transportation and help, or do you..." "How old is your car?" Was one of the questions. "Tell us how old your cars," because that's a good indicator of transportation issues. And then also for homelessness, a lot of students live in their cars. And one of the things that they talked about was colleges creating safe parking zones for those who live in their car, because they're too prideful to accept any other help. But if you can at least give them a safe place to park, they won't be harassed out in the public elsewhere. And I thought that that was a pretty good idea. We've got a parking structure that isn't utilized at night, and I would much rather have a kid under our parking structure than being harassed by somebody. And so those were some pretty big topics on student success, is how do we get at those people who are too prideful to take the help, but they really, really need that help? I thought those were interesting.
Some of those data that you just shared, Sarah Goldrick-Rob from Temple University, professor, shared some of those data. And there was a national survey done, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine institutions, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand respondents. Food insecure constituted forty-two to fifty-six percent. Housing insecure constituted forty-six to sixty percent of that body, and homeless were twelve to eighteen percent. So those are pretty graphic numbers.
I just want to say, in part of that discussion, really, presentation, we were handed out, it's called Alice in Michigan, and I can't remember the acronym, but it has to do with all of the, what they've done from this group of people, the professor and other people. And they compiled a booklet, and it talks about everything, household income, like Christine and Bill were saying, just childcare, spousal abuse, you know, all of this that impacts our students and how, and they try to give some ways, solutions of how we can work with these students so that they're not feeling like they're being targeted. And it was almost like a two-day presentation on this, of what we can do to try to help these students. And not just young people, but the older students also, because they fall in this group of people who are having difficulty. It's very good. Adam, share with me.
Oh, go ahead. I just wanted to share, you know, Jessica Hale, who is one of our faculty members in our ACS department, she did her sabbatical a couple of years on food security. And ironically, this morning, I received an email from Carrie Krantz in the English Department that they will be normalizing some food security strategies by adding snack stations to both our Writing Center and our ACS Center this fall. So it just kind of goes along with exactly what you all learned at the conference this week.
Oh, that's really good to hear.
But one of the things, too, that, and this is great, but one of the things that the professor said, the presenter said, that even though you have these out, a lot of people who really need it won't take it, it's the ones who don't need it take it. So that's another point, too. It's a trick, how to get them to feel, because they think that if I take it, then I'm going to be...
People will know.
People will know. But here's people who don't need it, they'll be taking it. So it's a real fine balance of how that is to be done.
I don't mind feeding more people. That's okay. It just helps them with their academics. Let them have a snack, you know? That's okay. Any other comments?
I just want to, just briefly mentioned, we were talking about, Vice President Mueller was talking about skill levels and increasing skill levels for adults and training. SimCOG, which I was on the, as a co-chair, and this is the final report, Future Skills Preparing for the Changing World of Work. It is a complete in-depth analysis of what is needed, and Michelle has been there at the meetings. And I wasn't able to be at the meeting last Thursday when it was being presented, because I was in Travis, but I, if you get this, I'm hoping you can get this to them, Dr. Blanca, because it's really important to see what it is going on with people who really need the jobs, who really need, want the jobs, but they don't feel like they can do it. And Washoe County is in this throughout the report. But it's a really good report, like I said, a lot of effort. This is a two-year report, and I'm hoping that, you know, it'll be passed out, and Dr. Blanca and I are trying to think of how we can get other community colleges, not just our region, because there's seven community colleges in our region that belong to SimCOG, but we want to get all of twenty-eight community colleges to be able to understand what is needed to help people and get students into community colleges, because community colleges are the focus that we want to get the people trained in. And that's our goal. So anybody just wanted to say that.
Any other comments from the Board? Okay. Dr. Blanca?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for renewing my contract and for my increase in salary. It continues to be an honor to work here, and I treasure literally every moment. And you just heard this great presentation from the staff that was sitting up here. And I have an amazing team, but my team extends way beyond this. There are so many people, people sitting in this audience, people that aren't here that made all these initiatives even possible. We've done really great things at this college, and it just speaks a lot about the faculty and the staff and the leadership that we have here. And I know that we are going to continue to be as creative and yet as cautious, cautiously creative, does that make sense, as possible to continue to move this college forward, because that's what it's about now, is the sustainability, the sustainability of this college moving forward. I was also glad to hear those speakers, because I'm very proud of our college, especially in this case, our foundation, that they have already started this emergency fund for our students. I mean, true, we have, you know, we have a way to go, but we have done that, and we're going to continue to do more. And I think that's wonderful. Some good news to share is our former trustee, Anthony Procasini, received a Purple Heart. And, as you know, he was behind the formation of our college in nineteen sixty-five, and he was on our Board from sixty-six through ninety-two. I thought you thought you were the longest.
I thought so, too. Actually, I thought Dick Bailey...
Dick Bailey is...
Dick Bailey is the longest.
Thirty-three years. So he's really, he's receiving this Purple Heart.
For service at the college?
No. Yeah. Yeah.
It's our first service in the Marine Corps during World War II. He was wounded on May fourteenth while battling Japanese soldiers during the waning days of the war. Tony's now ninety-eight, and he is still a huge supporter of our college. Thank you. I'd like to thank the trustees for attending the MCCA conference. It was good to have... It was, it was good to have trustees around the table to hear all the discussions. We just completed the ironworkers training. There was 800 ironworkers were on campus, and that was, they were pleased with everything. So from the ground staff to the food, to the faculty, everyone, IT, all the support they received, they were very pleased with that. And one of the things that they weren't too excited about, which I think I need to share, is the air quality in this building. That was kind of problematic, very. So right now, Bill's working on doing something so that when the UA gets here, we can try to get this...
The air conditioning?
Yeah, the air conditioning, it was just...
So it was the hottest week of the year, and we had some of the hottest days on record in 100% humidity. So the buildings were not designed to hold that and 100% capacity within. However, with that said, we have an amazing crew that gets the most possible out of it. But we did have one of our chillers that supports the central campus, not this building, but many of the buildings, that went down. So we went into emergency repair mode, and by Wednesday at 4:00 PM, we had that back up and running. And so we were able to hold temps in most classrooms at around 70 degrees for the balance of the week, but it was a challenge for us.
In-house personnel or outside contractor?
We, we did both. We, we had our in-house team, which worked around the clock, literally, but in addition to that, we supplemented that with outside help.
So, yes, sir. No, go right ahead.
No, I'm done.
You're done, okay. So why that's important is because we want them to come here. And so we try to make sure that we have everything buttoned down before they get there. Everyone's very responsive when they're here. So I know, we know that this is important to our community and to our college, but in particular, our community. So we do our best, and Marilyn will be all ready for you. Right? Okay. Also, Target Axe is a company that supplies our student lifecycle management software. And we were awarded a grant worth $11,376. And that grant will, will fund student success initiatives, in particular, our Student Emergency Fund. And I believe Amanda in our Foundation Office wrote that grant with input from others around the college. So great job. That's great. Okay, we told you that our, we'll have, we're signing a five-year contract again with the, not again, a new one, with the United Union of Roofers, Waterproofers, and Allied Workers. So we're looking forward to that, and I'm looking forward to welcoming General President Kinsey Robinson and his colleagues for our contract signing. All are welcome at WCC. There's a mural in LA which has over 86 photos, and we're finishing, adding the finishing touches to that mural. So I encourage you to go and see the mural and the 306 photos that are represented on it.
Now, these are students?
Students in, I'm looking at scene right now, so...
It's students, faculty, and staff.
Oh, and isn't that Clarence?
Yep, students, faculty, and staff.
Students, faculty, and staff.
And mirror so you can see yourself.
I think that's great, yeah. Oh, and a mirror?
Yeah, right there. Mirror so you can see yourself.
Oh, yeah.
That was the big addition.
Okay. Okay, that was a smirk. Our online learning team won the Blackboard Catalyst Award for Innovation and Excellence. And I'd like to, innovation, WC Innovation Technologies Manager Nancy Collison, and Instructional Media Support Expert Patricia Campbell, and Onlinings Support Expert Sean Thomas were winners in the Training and Professional Development category. And thank you so much, Pete Pacilli, for leading a great team. And we talked about the adjunct faculty, who are very important to everything we do. And last but not least is our Jerry Jernigan Memorial Golf Oding, which is Monday on August 12th at Fox Hill. And I know you're going to be really disappointed, there is no meeting in August. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Well, when is the golf outing?
August 12th, Monday, August 12th.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Tab E, Old Business. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve new programs and 3+1 articulation agreements for Fall 2019 as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion on Tab E? Any questions for VP Hearn or other? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to Tab F. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the discontinuation of programs for the Fall 2019 as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on Tab F? Any questions or comments for VP Hearn? None? Hearing none? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Moving on to Tab G. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a construction contract with Hobson Black in the amount not to exceed $380,000. This is for the ML renovation project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Any discussion on Tab G? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dave.
Just one question I'd like to see put into this, and I'm, it could be just in some discussions with Hobson Black, that we ask them to look at the opportunities and potential costs for energy savings in new building elements that they're looking at, or in adding solar energy opportunities as part of the building project.
Certainly as part of the bid process, it, it requires that we achieve LEED Silver, which is a very high standard, which would encompass, among all the things, energy savings as part of that. So this renovation will accomplish that goal for LEED Silver.
Could we ask them to look at the possibility of incorporating some solar elements into it?
I think that the solar elements need to be a broader discussion, and we are starting those discussions, that, that would support larger portions of the power needs here on campus, including the new advanced transportation center as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary De Vardy?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee Knight?
Yes.
Thank you. Tab H. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a construction contract with S&amp;Z Sheet Metal Inc. in the amount of $199,500. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay, any discussion or question on Tab H here? Okay, hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary De Vardy?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We already did Tab I earlier, so go down to Tab J. This is for the SC Flooring Replacement Contract. VP Johnson, do you want to comment here?
Sure, we are, this is one of many phases that we have for flooring replacement across the campus. We have some key areas on the second floor of SC that largely support students. And so the proposal is, is that we have a contract with Flooring Technologies. We would target doing this work during the holiday break between fall semester ending and winter semester beginning.
Any questions? Go ahead.
So, we're targeting doing this in December. I'm wondering if maybe, if people are comfortable with approving it, if moving it forward to be approved tonight, if that would have any impact on our ability to make that timeline, or if that's necessary at all.
It's, it's always appreciated, but we have, we have time to get it done within the December window. But certainly, it is very much appreciated to have it done soon.
Well, we don't have a meeting in August.
Correct.
We're skipping August.
So we wouldn't approve it till late in September?
Till September, right.
So I'm thinking, maybe we approve it tonight, and then the contractor can get us on this guy.
Yes, that would be appreciated.
I'm going to move that we...
Wait, go ahead, Diana. You have a comment?
But I'm looking at this, this is Flooring Technologies of Clinton Township that provide, that they provide the lowest bid, so this hasn't been done yet, right? They have not provided the lowest bid?
They have.
The bids have, the bids have been provided, and Flooring Technologies was the best bid for this town.
Okay, but it says provided the lowest bid.
Yeah, they did provide. He's saying they did provide.
They provided it.
They provided the lowest bid.
They provided it.
Yeah.
Okay. He's saying that they provided it. Does that make sense?
Well, it looks like provided is based on them still trying to, you know, for...
Oh, I see.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It doesn't say that it was done.
Was, was the lowest bid.
Was the lowest bid. It says provided the lowest bid.
Yep. So they certainly were the lowest bid.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'd like to move that we consider this for final resolution tonight, instead of at our next meeting.
Support for action?
So moved, support.
Okay, all in favor of moving this to an action item? Do we need to roll call it, or?
Just a voice vote.
Just a voice vote on this.
All in favor of moving this to an action, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, hearing none? Okay, this is now an action item. I will now entertain a motion to vote on this.
So moved.
Support, support. Okay, it's been moved in support. Any other questions or comments?
I just don't understand why we have to rush it when he said it wasn't needed to do right now. I mean, I...
But we're doing it, so.
Well, I just don't...
It's already coming forward.
Already done. That ship has sailed.
Well, I must have stood on the dock too long, then.
I'm sorry, I'm too fast.
We're now voting on whether to act.
I know, I know, it's just going to be an action item, I'm just like, wait a minute, you know? Okay.
Okay. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary De Vardy?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee Knight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion during the monthly meeting?
Supported. We did it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.